Councilor Kadeem?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Yeah.
La Libbidi?
Yeah.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Yeah.
Repozo?
Yeah.
Washington?
Yeah.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meaning law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public hearing and may transmit this in three media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unforeseen by those present and not be acknowledged and permissible. We have a number of people assigned to the citizen's zip area. I want to remind everyone, we have three minutes. First is Russell Correa, subject matter, Bank Street Armory.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're very welcome.
And Vice President, distinguished members of the council.
If you can sit up to the seat, please.
Where do you want me to go?
Speak up to the microphone, please.
Thank you.
Your three minutes will start when you start speaking, sir. You can have a seat.
Thank you. We're in the midst of one of the largest construction projects since the 195 and the Bragger Bridge, and we're prepared to sell off a jewel. A rough one at present, absolutely, but no less a jewel. I think we should keep the Armory as a military edifice and try in some way, shape, or form to tie it in with Battleship Cove, the Marine Museum, and all of our other venues. We could run a trolley like we did back in the day, make ourselves a loop, turn this into what Fall River has deserved for so long. Not another, "Oh, why did we let the City Hall go? Oh, why did we do this? Why didn't we do that?" Here's the time to do this. Now's the time. Please. I mean, Maycomba Properties, yes, they've done fabulous, the buildings look wonderful, but they're no longer ours. They belong to him. We giving away all our taxes, we're not sharing it with the people. The people are struggling. Why are we constantly putting the burden on the people? Make this where we can say, we can have more like the overnights with the Boy Scouts, the Cub Scouts, all these paramilitary, I don't care, historical historians can stay at the building. Look at those rooms. He's gonna sell those rooms, all those beautiful fixtures. It's built to withstand embattlement. It's gonna take a test of time again, but a little bit of work, a little bit of buffing and polishing, yeah, money, of course, money, but this is something we should not let go by the wayside. Once again, we'll try, zah. You know, we'll try. Well, let's try again, but try harder. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your thoughts.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilor Naskwes, subject matter, Bank Street Armory.
Because I do have a request before my time starts. I do have a request because I know that, he says I can call him Joe, but I'm gonna respectfully call him by his title and just request, Council President Kamara, can you, if you don't mind, inform the public watching tonight and everyone in attendance, the email you received and the meeting you attended last week when you spoke on it during your interview during on the Jamie Show, WSAR?
It's privy to the bench, you know. But it's not a back and forth.
No, no.
I know you're getting it. I will tell the clerk to, I will take care of that, yeah.
It's because people have spoke on it and they're kinda...
I think I forwarded to the councils, right, Lauren?
I think Jen did that. Yeah, she, I know she's in the discussion. Right, I think that's what she meant.
Yeah, all councils received an invitation to go to the historic committee that was taking place last, maybe two weeks ago. And the meeting was so that the city could get certified as a community to apply for federal and historic grants. So all councils received the same invitation that I received. It just happened to be the day I did my radio interview and I mentioned it. So you all had that same invitation that I received and the corresponding email that I received. It wasn't any secrecy.
Unfortunately, that meeting was on the same day as the candidate forum.
Correct.
So those of us who had the first forum weren't able to attend that meeting.
Correct. Yep. But you did receive the information and you have the email that was attached to it.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure everyone sees it, because I want them, through the clerk, make sure that everyone received the same email I received and she notified me that everyone did. So that's what you're talking about.
Yes, so basically...
Your three minutes is gonna begin now, though.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So basically, for the first time, Fall River is about to be certified and be eligible to be federally recognized to receive federal funds for historic preservation. And the big contentious surrounding this argument is, if the city decides to keep it, how are we going to preserve it going forward? So, given historic preservation and the federal government knows that type of work involves money, so going forward, not only with the Bank Street Armory, but with all of our buildings, we're not gonna have access to chump change. Like, this is a real, true beginning that I believe, this is what happens when you don't rush a vote, new details come down. I didn't know about it, he didn't know about it, and it's very privy to this conversation. So I think, in my opinion, out of respect for the public at large who want this building and given this new information, I think for this item coming up before you, it should be tabled so that the public can know the types of monies, the amounts that we're gonna be receiving, so that all the information is out there, so that everyone can make a decision based on all the information, because I believe the people who wanna speak on it are afraid to speak on it, but I just think it's just to respect the process and like how the Council President said before, you know, this whole thing was rushed, didn't sound right, I mean, this building's being sold below the assessed value, you know, the list, and I could go on and on, but given this new type of information, I think, out of respect for everything, I think it should be tabled so that we can know the types of monies that we're gonna be getting year after year for historic preservation, and to finally change the status quo that we don't take care of our buildings because now we're about to have federal monies for the first time, and I think it's just really important that we table it so that we all can know, because I'm kinda curious and a lot of people are curious, too. So, thank you for your time and congratulations on your, you know, big day and all that, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelly Buchanan, subject matter, illegal encampments, Bank Street Armory. Three minutes.
Good evening. I am here tonight as a follow-up on the progress concerning my grievance regarding illegal encampments within our city, specifically the encampments located just below Kennedy Park. Please advise on the progress that has been made since my last appearance. These illegal encampments, it's growing again, it's, there's so many more, and not from around here. Again, I thank you for your time and consideration and attention to this matter. I know, Ms. Deion, you said you guys had something in the works, so I just wanna make sure you guys are continuing to not set it aside. And I have a few comments about the Bank Street Armory. I didn't know much about it, I think it's a beautiful building that we should keep. After hearing Ms. Perever and Michelle speak last week on the legalities of how you guys already took this for vote, right? So it went for vote two weeks prior. It was a no, the building was gonna stay with the city. There's a process through the charters, right? Ten days the mayor has to put something forward, if I'm correct on that? It didn't happen. It came before, I don't, maybe it was an honest mistake on somebody's part, I mean, I don't expect everybody to know everything, but now's your chance to make it wrong or right. There's a process, there's a reason why we have charters, there's a reason why we have laws, there's a reason why we have ordinances, we're to follow them, we don't pick and choose. Tonight's vote is gonna surely show where your alliance is, whether it's with the people of Fall River, doing what's right opposed to what is wrong, being fair, right, and just, or it's gonna show who is, who's basically owned, who is bought and paid for. That's what it's gonna show tonight, unfortunately, because regardless, it went to vote. There were seven people, am I correct? Four said no selling, three was for it. That's a binding vote. You have to stay with what the vote is. We can't just pick and choose, well, I don't like this, or I don't know if it's coming down from somebody, like I said, I don't know if it was just a mistake, it happens, none of us are perfect. But tonight is your chance to make it right. If, whatever the process is that Mr. McComan's gotta go through to do this whole process again, yeah, it stinks on his part, but that's, there's a reason why we have ordinances, there's a reason why we have charters, there's a reason why we have laws. We don't get to pick and choose. So tonight is gonna show, remember, there's an election coming up, right? People are gonna see this, people are gonna see who is bought and paid for. There's a, there's gonna be a reason why this is getting rushed through. If it's a mistake, tonight will show that everybody say, let's, I guess, table it, right? If it's not tabled and the vote goes through and it passes, there's gotta be consequences legally, I mean, it's not...
Ten seconds.
So I just hope you guys do what's right. You guys work for the people, not for the mayor or anybody else, you work for us. Do what's right, lead by example. You guys are supposed to be following laws and rules and...
Thank you very much.
You want us to do it, you all have to do it, too. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just wanna make a correction, there was not four no's and three yeses, there were four yeses and three no's, but you needed six votes, so...
Okay, so...
Yeah, it's still...
There's still a process to follow.
No, no, I agree with what you're saying, I'm just saying, I just wanna make the correction on what the vote was. Councilor C1, Councilor Kadeem?
Yeah, I take exception to the statements that were made. So, to say that a counselor is bought and paid for because they voted a certain way, that's absolutely ludicrous. I've said this before, everybody is passionate about saving the Bank Street Armory. We're all on the same page, we wanna see the Bank Street Armory saved. How we get there is where we disagree, right? So for folks to come up here and say that we're bought and paid, you know, I was at, I was at a, you know, a candidate's night, trash in, trash out, to me, that's disgusting. And, you know, quite frankly, I've said this, I've said it on the floor, you don't like my stance, don't vote for me. I get the, there's an election. You don't agree with what I stand for?
You have three minutes to vote.
You don't agree with what I stand for, don't vote for me. That's, that's the bottom line. Every vote that I take as one city councilor, I look at every single issue, take all the information, I understand the charters, I understand the rules, I understand the ordinance, I understand all kinds of bylaws, I understand everything. I make my decisions on educated votes. You disagree with me, that's fine, but please do not come up here because a counselor voted a certain way to say that we are bought and paid for, because I think the average, or a good majority of the folks in the city of Fall River understand full, full out that nobody can buy me and I'm not bought or paid for. So with that, I yield.
Yeah, no, I agree, Councilor. I mean, people come down and I can't control what they say, neither can any of my colleagues. The only thing we can do is what Councilor Kadeem did, if we feel that there's something being said that's not right, we get our time, too, to just express our feelings. So I respect the individual that spoke, I don't agree with her assessment of being bought and paid for, even if you don't agree with my stance on it, but it's just unfortunate that some people have to defend that. So, I know all of you, I don't think any of you are bought and paid for, not even least on occasion, so we'll go to the next caller. Next, we have Alexander Silva, subject matter, Bank Street Armory.
Hello, Alexander Silva, 148 Purchase Street. Members of the City Council, the people of Fall River look to those who are elected and work on their behalf to make Fall River the best place it can be. Sometimes this takes recognizing Fall River's value and potential beyond the return on a dollar. Sometimes it takes having the foresight to see what would truly be worthwhile for the future of the city. It's always easy to say something's too difficult to do, and it's even easier to say it's not your fault. The reason I've heard repeated most for supporting the proposal to convert the Bank Street Armory into housing is that no one has seen any other plan for an alternative. The real tragedy is that these very city officials are the people Fall River residents look toward to come up with plans for the future. Yet, some are willing to settle for an imperfect bidding and sale process simply because it's the first and only thing to come along. The people of Fall River don't deserve to be told again and again that something is the only option when the reality is that it's the only option presented. It is, is it not the duty of city officials to come up with more than one plan for the future of Fall River? Is it not the responsibility of city officials to improve the process, to make sure residents' best interests are served? If you truly can't think of any plan to at least ensure due diligence has been given to the Armory and all future reuse options have been explored, I will help. One plan could see the city requesting Emergency Community Preservation Act funds to stabilize the roof of the Armory for a fraction of the total repair costs. Then the City Committee on Real Estate could meet for the first time this year to do its duty and discuss what the best use of the Armory would be for the people of Fall River. The Committee on Real Estate should solicit community input and the city could organize a survey or a charrette to explore what residents want the Armory to be. After all this information is collected, the city could then put out a new request for proposals for a stabilized Armory, no longer racing against time, specifically geared toward what Fall River wants, and provide incentives to make it happen. All of this doesn't have to be a fantasy. In truth, it should be common practice as done in municipalities around the rest of the state and the country. I look forward to the day where we'll try that here in Fall River. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I just could, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna be on that soapbox where I just offend everybody. So we have multiple residents that come down and again, this is, this is one of my frustrations. Folks truly do not understand what our role is in local government. We are a legislative body, everybody is coming down asking for us to put forth plans. Again, went to a candidate's night, everybody asked me, what are my plans for policing? What's my plans for economic development? What's my plans for housing? My response to that is nothing. I am a legislative body. I vote on appropriations, that's the executive branch. The executive branch is supposed to submit plans to the legislative body, and as you had mentioned, we approve or dispose of those things that come down before us. We can have these conversations, and we typically have these conversations with the, with the administration, but we cannot force them to listen to our plans. We can come up with all the plans, have all the answers, and if the administration is not willing to execute them and support that and actually submit these plans down to the City Council for either appropriation or approval on certain things that require a legislative body, we have no authority. We have individuals that are coming talking about encampments. We've got no authority to do anything about the encampments. We've had these conversations. Unless the administration comes down with a plan to fix it and provide a request for additional funding on something, we have no authority to do any of it. In terms of the sale of real estate, that's all we have. We have, our vote is to whether or not we wanna dispose and sell of the real estate. We don't create the bids, we don't have discussions on the bids. Yes, the administration may come down and see what we wanna see in an RFP, but they do not have to take any of our input in terms of what an RFP is submitted, that is on the executive branch. We are simply taking a vote as to whether or not we wanna dispose of this property. That is it. You know, to talk about what we wanna do with plans, yes, I could give you a million different options and plans that I have for the city of Fall River, but it's meaningless in my position as a city councilor because we are a legislative body, there is no jurisdiction, there's no role that we have as individual city councilors to submit that. That focus needs to be put on who you are gonna vote for, for mayor, and whether that individual has the long-term vision and the strategic planning that the city needs, not the City Council, without a yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C3, Councilor Kilby?
Yeah, to echo those, echo those comments, I've had multiple, multiple discussions with the administration with regard to their commitment or their, and I'm not blaming it on, well, as Councilor Kadeem stated, it's not up to us, we vote on what's before us, and the feasibility of the Armory becoming a police station is real. So I, multiple occasions, I spoke with the administration with regard, and I said it here on the floor in front of our city administrator, if there's a commitment to, you know, to fulfill the, you know, alternative plans, and the answer is no. As early as today, I spoke with Councilor Kamara, it wasn't a private conversation, and I spoke with the mayor personally again, and the answer was no. So I am not, I am not gonna risk, once again, that building decaying to a point where it becomes unsalvageable. And so, as Councilor Kadeem stated, there, you know, we have decisions to make, we dispose of decisions that come before us, and I wish I had a magic wand to make that building what it was before. It's a very difficult vote for me, I, many people call me who I, I near and dear to my heart, and, but, you gotta face reality, there's no commitment. If there's no commitment, then I'm gonna vote for what I think is relatively certain thing, a different use, yes, but a relatively certain thing that is gonna preserve the building. So, difficult vote, but that's how I stand on it. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Our conversation that you and I had was about you informing me that, about your conversation with the administration, wasn't about me insinuating anything, you were just telling me the conversation that you had. I tend to disagree, as I told you earlier, that this Bank Street Armory is the same scenario as the police station. You have a lot more use out of the Bank Street Armory than you ever could get out of the banks, out of the police station. And there was never any commitment to invest money into the police station, as there could be, and a means to invest money into this, just as some people said to share it up and take care of it for now. We are using it as storage, correct, right now, we are, we are using the building, it's not dilapidated, it is structurally sound, so it's a bit of a difference.
Council President, we all have conversations, and I have a very good relationship with you, so...
Same here.
What I, what I mentioned is...
I just have to clarify that.
...in terms of my fear that the building is, and I visited last week, and I saw the condition that it's in, and it's sad to see. Are you...
Thank you, Councilor. Next, we have Mike Haren, subject matter, Bank Street Armory.
First of all, I respect all the commitment and service you guys have done for the city of Fall River. Grew up in a house where my father was a state rep, I understand how hard you work and how much time it takes. With that being said, okay, the last time I was here, I talked about the cultural and historical significance, and that's why I disagree with you very strongly, Councilor Kilby, that the police, the old police building doesn't have any historical or cultural significance, it didn't serve hundreds of thousands of teens, it didn't serve veterans, I think that point has been made. But today, I'm in front of you to talk about what can be in real time. And with community preservation funds, which is the exact term to preserve these buildings, I handed you what's going on at the Andre McCoy Center in New Bedford. The building is three years older than the Armory, the old New Bedford Volk High School. They got sports, life skills, computer labs, health and wellness, event center, job training. The Plymouth Memorial Hall has become an economic engine as an event center to Plymouth, who is in a boom time town right now. Concerts, comedians, MMA, boxing, conventions, art festivals. And then we go to the District Center for the Arts, a building that is over 200 years old, that Alex Stylus has repurposed, okay, with the help of Preservation Act money, both federally and at the state and city level, to preserve that building that is over 200 years old. All of you have been provided with that information today, okay? Make no mistake about it, there is money available. I talked to John Bray from the Community Preservation Society, and they're, they're wanting and willing to do it. The director from the sixth floor doesn't share that narrative, for whatever reason, okay? But I ask you one question, why the rush? Why are we gonna take this building that has served us for so long and done so much good and provided so many services, from veterans to sports to job training to life skills to all of it? Why is it, why do we have a big rush to make this decision? Take the trip to the Andre McCoy Center, take the trip to Plymouth Memorial Hall, take the trip to the District Center for the Arts, and see how significant and what the impact is on that building that a preserved historic building can have. And I ask one more question, right? If this is about money and dollars and cents, and it is, for $200,000, we're gonna let this go, where it could be scrapped in its worst form for stone historic stairways for a million dollars? This deal is bad all the way around. It's bad from a business angle, it is bad for the veterans, and it is bad for children and the revitalization of downtown. I respect your service, I hope you respect my commitment to save the Bank Street Armory.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Wood, subject matter, Maplewood School, Maple School Drop?
Drop Off.
Maplewood, Maplewood School Drop Off. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm not much of a speaker, so I apologize for that. I have a concern I think deserves your attention and definitely deserves mine, I have two children that go to Atlanta's charter. Their pickup and drop-off point is Maplewood Park. There's very poor control of the parking and the position of where the buses come in and where they leave from. I know y'all are probably familiar with the area, it's a... It's a very narrow road that they have to park on. People park on both sides. And the buses come in and they park almost at the very end and stop in the middle of the road to pick the children up. So, by the time all the children get off and in the cars, everybody behind the buses are impatient, you know, they're ready to leave. They run around the buses. You know, I've seen two kids almost get hit in the last week. Also, the intersection there where Ciaba is, it's like a cluster. There's no clear signs of anything, what direction, who goes where. So, that, at the time everybody's leaving, just turns into a racetrack. It's just an accident waiting to happen. I just wanted to bring it to your attention and hope you can provide some solution or help with the situation.
We will bring it to the attention of the traffic department, make sure they're looking at it. You talked about the little street that's in between Stafford Road and the park?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll bring it to the traffic department's attention. Laura Ferreira sheets can maybe have a meeting and see what's going on with them and call them and see what can happen there.
All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Wendy Malafont, subject matter, Bank Street Armory and Housing. Three minutes until you start to left, you start speaking.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about the long delay.
Oh, you're okay.
Basically, I'm interested in having the city take care of the Bank Street Armory, keeping it. It's like one of the most unusual buildings. It's unique. It's historical, and it's been used for very many different things, and it could be again. There's so many other people who have, like, given you statistics and talked about different options and things, and it's basically, to me, that that building is just such a unique building in the city that it could, something could be done with it. And as they were talking about different places where you can get funding to help rejuvenate it, I'm to the point where I would even volunteer whatever labor that I could give to help renew the Bank Street Armory, to put it back in shape. But I tell you what, I can't do the roof, so the roof is out. But anything else that's in the Bank Street Armory, I might have some skills that might be able to be used to rejuvenate it, but I am for preserving the Bank Street Armory.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There was one more thing, too, that I would like to say. I don't know what happened to what type of heights. I mean, they knocked down all of the housing that was affordable housing. And it had been expressed that they would be building more affordable housing in that area, but nothing has been done. Has anybody seen any plans for that particular area, or is there a reason why they can't build?
Well, my memory serves correct, I know that was tied up for a while with regard to different agencies and nonprofits filing a lawsuit against the city after it, you know, it was demolished, and that was a popular thing back then. I thought it was doing their fair share and those comments. So, good question. And the assurances were at the time that it would be affordable market, affordable housing, family units, not the project, you know, the traditional post-World War II project. So, good question, and I promise you, I can ask the clerk for my number. I'll try to get the necessary answer for you, and if you want to leave your number, I will call, okay?
Okay.
That's a good, very good question. It has been sitting there for over 20 years. Councillor Kamara's been around for a while. Councillor, maybe you can elaborate on the statement I just made.
When that was torn down, it was a legislative act, and the city felt that it met the requirements of what it needed to do, was agreed upon about the tenants and the city and the state. And then after we relocated all the individuals who lived there, because we had an enormous amount of available apartments, and the rest of the state was not meeting or coming anywhere near the amount, we were at over 30% of affordable housing, where other people from other communities were coming here because there was no affordable housing in their communities. So, the city entered an agreement that we would relocate all of these people within the city of Fall River to the same type of housing that they had. Some of them were given Section 8 vouchers and went back to where they came from. And then after that took place, the number of apartments and houses that were gonna be built wasn't affordable to any developer, so there was no action on that. So, the city further went and did some more allocation to place more residents. And then there was a lawsuit that went back and forth, lasted over 10 years, and I'm not sure what the end result was, but the cities, I believe, was found not in compliance of anything or did anything wrong, that they met their obligation for what happened there. So, that's the best I can remember. It's been through a number of administrations, and I'm not sure what the process is right now. Housing Authority has those answers to those questions. I don't. Once you get to the law department and once you get to the courts, the city council is not involved anymore.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, just one more thing. Basically, there's a lot of people coming into Fall River.
Your three minutes are up now, I just wanted to let you know.
Can I just do?
Motion away the rules.
Motion away.
For an additional three minutes?
Additional minute, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Basically, there's a lot of people coming into the city, buying a property, and I've been getting at least five things in the mail, basically saying, "We want to buy your property," and it's mostly Boston phone numbers, Boston area codes. Now, they're coming into the city, they're doubling and tripling the rent when they buy the houses, so we need more affordable, not market rate, housing, because people in Fall River don't make the amount of money that they need to live in these particular apartments now because the rents have gone up so high. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, to community finance, we convene with representation from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, city administrator and city engineer for an update on the progress of Route 79, Deval Street Corridor Improvement Project. It was adopted on 9/12/23. We're gonna hold the discussion and tape for the events. If you could, just give us a brief what's going on and state everyone's name and address for the record. I'd appreciate it.
You can stop now. Okay. I'm Valerie Kilduff.
Please speak into the microphone.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Valerie Kilduff, I'm with Mastod. I am the project manager for the project on Route 79 to Deval Street.
My name is Brian Lewis. I am one of the assistant construction engineers for District 5 out of Taunton.
Daniel Aguiar, Director of Engineering and Planning for the city of Fall River and City Engineer. I can start off, I think. We were here a few months ago when we gave you a general update of the construction activities going on through the Route 79, Deval Street Corridor. Val was here that evening. We were just, probably just in the first few months of the construction process, and we explained at that time that all of the big earthwork movings that were going on were very quick, and you see such great change and improvement very quickly. Over the summer, it's been a little more tedious type of work, utilities, rearranging of some of the roadways, traffic, bridge deconstruction, bridge reconstruction of one of the new ramps that brings us back down to the Deval Street Corridor. So, the summer has been spent basically dealing with Comcast gas, CSOs, water, all of the infrastructure that goes underneath this roadway corridor. We're just now getting into another exciting phase, which Val, I'll let her have the glory of telling you some of the exciting things that you'll be seeing happening, coming up soon. So, Val, if you want to give them some of the highlights of what we're transitioning to now, because this is a big transition to what we're heading into next.
Yes, so obviously you guys have been down there. You've seen what's happening. A lot of the big earthwork is pretty much, pretty much done with that, most of that. You'll see a lot of loom and seeding going on right now, trying to get ready for the winter so we can make sure that we don't have a lot of just movement of the stuff that's already been done. Most of that will be at final grade. You'll also be seeing the bridge start to come up. We are heading into the winter, so you're going to see a slowdown. They will, most of the utilities have given us drop dead dates of December 15-ish, which is a month later than typical. Usually, the shutdowns are in November. We're hoping that the weather holds out and that we can get that month done, and they will continue to work as much as they can, as long as the weather allows them to do that. The road reconstruction, you'll start to see some of the hardscape going in once we get all of the culverts and stuff, because once the utilities have finally moved out of the way, we'll be getting in some of the big culvert sections of the work that need to be done, and then you'll start seeing the shape of your hardscape, so your sidewalks and that kind of stuff. So, we're heading in that direction. We do still have a lot of, like Dan said, we've done all the utility work to move them out of our way, so we will now start to do the heavy construction work in the street, and some of that's been happening. But that is the big piece of this project, is to separate that, the CSO work and the culvert work, and then once that's done, like I said, you'll start seeing your hardscape coming in. So, we're progressing really well.
I'm sorry, did you say some of, you're separating the CSO suits or the direct discharges into the Taunton River?
Some of that is happening, yes, in the project. You have a project within our project, and CDM Smith was your, was, it was and is still your designer for that work. There was a piece of that project built in our project, and there is some separation going on with that piece, mostly around Turner Street, I believe, which kind of lays the groundwork for some of the rest of the work that has to be done throughout the city. But we'll be connecting into the work that we're doing, which is why, when you see some of these pieces of culvert, it's so big, is because we are doing some of that separation now within your, within the street, trying to get all of it done so you don't have to rip anything up and do it again. We don't want that either. It's a lot of, you know, time and money and effort put here from both the city and Mastod, and that's where we're heading with this, so.
Do you know how many there are? Will they be clearly marked as direct discharges into the Taunton River? And the city of Providence does that?
We're not adding any new discharges, so these are modifications to existing discharges, from what I understand. But a large amount of specifically what happens down through, we call it Little Deval Street, down in front of the gas station area, there are a number of new CSO tunnels coming through that area that connect a bunch of upstream stuff and then go out towards the existing outfall. That's already there, so it's incorporating what we would have been mandated to do, as you all know better than I for the number of years you've been dealing with it, but through Paul Furlan's office, this was already being designed. But then when the 79 project came through, Paul's office made sure that all of the work that he would need to have completed in this corridor is being made part of this project.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, we have not, there are so many regulations, which I know you guys are aware of. All of those are being met through DEP and Coast Guard, and all of the different permits are in place. We did not raise those. We are still keeping your flood zones. All of that stuff is staying status quo. Reason for, another reason why that bridge is there, we took one bridge down, but we couldn't pull that second bridge mainly for compensatory storage area for flooding if it happens, and also that is, we technically think it's designated as your.
It is an evacuation route. It's a question that I asked, why are we putting a bridge back?
Right, so we needed to keep that up.
And it was basically an evacuation route heading north. That's why there's only the northerly direction on this new bridge, so that it did not go through the existing Deval Street area that floods sometimes. So, they had to make sure that it was elevated so that the evacuation route would never be flooded.
Yes.
Councillor C3, councillor Vice President Perro.
Val, are all the utilities gonna be underground? Because the last time we did a part of the project up there, the cost of doing it underground, they didn't do it, which didn't make sense, because that piece kind of goes up if we want to get it flat. So, are all of these utilities underground?
For everything that's in our footprint, I believe.
Yeah, anything within the roadway, that roadway corridor, I believe it's probably almost all underground already. So, yes, it would all be underground except for the signals, the light signals and everything that goes associated with that.
You know, I've been attending those meetings for a long time on 79, and I still, I still cannot believe, I am perplexed by the fact that we don't have a road going and coming like on Deval Street, so that all of the land would be connected. So, you know, Heritage State Park, the Veterans Memorial Park, all of that land would be connected, rather than have this street and this street going between the other land that we got.
Yeah, I think we discussed this last time.
I hate it.
No, I understand, but I'll respond again. I don't mind.
Come on.
So, there are a number of existing properties that have existing road frontage along the way, that is Deval Street. So, if we would have disconnected them, they would no longer have roadway frontage creating zoning noncompliance for them, and then you would now be putting vacant parcels between them and the roadway system. So, we have to maintain all the property owners' rights as they currently exist and work within the interior portions of this. So, the outside easterly edge and the westerly edge of Deval Street as you see it is not changing.
I would put roads right through so that every property owner got a road going right into this, but.
Well, the more roads you put, the less land is available for development. So, this was the most efficient way.
But all that land would be contiguous. I just, I just can't see that. Sometimes I just shake my head. Other places, I see them able to do things that sometimes we're not able to do, because, you know, I mean, you can take something by them in a domain if it's gonna be for the better good of everybody, so.
Understood, but if you want to speak more about it at length, feel free to come by and see me.
Oh, I have, Dan. I just don't listen sometimes. I mean, I did get a few driveways extended on there because when they did it at first, some of the driveway entrances to businesses was very narrow, so we managed to get some of those done.
Every week, every week, we meet with a team of 20, 30.
Yeah.
Different contractors, and we have, over the last year, we've made many changes and implementations to accommodate existing property owners with their proposed driveway locations, with improvements, with improved abilities.
And I really think, you know, Val and Brian, Mr. Lewis, going to, like Point Glory, and meeting with residents there, letting them know what would be disruptive, what wouldn't, how to, I mean, DOT has certainly gone above and beyond if they're asked to come to speak to any particular group. But I saw something in the paper about, was one of the properties that there was a problem was with Commonwealth Landing?
Well, there is.
Explain that.
So, there is currently a construction activity that's going to begin.
Right.
That requires a large pipe system to be put down, Remington, correct?
Right.
Remington. So, that's going to alter some of the access to get to Commonwealth Landing. So, we've been working with specifically the owner of Duke's Bakery, for instance, who has Thanksgiving and Christmas coming up, their busiest times of the year. So, I personally have spoken to them. I've put in them in contact with the construction supervisors on the ground, and they're working to make sure that access is. So, access will not be, is never cut off.
Right.
It is modified. So, in that section of Deval Street heading south, you'll see there are a number of bypass lanes that are currently being constructed. So, as you travel Deval Street south now, all traffic, for a good majority of it, will shift to this new bypass lane, and that's to allow the new Deval Street sidewalk shared use paths to be constructed where Deval Street is currently. So, there will be shifts, still heading in that direction.
Right.
But everyone keeps their access through the entire process.
And I mean, that's what I'm talking about when I say that I think DOT has been fair here with us to help a business to make sure that people can get access there, especially the busy season, so.
I think the design build team has also been very cooperative.
They have, yeah.
When we've asked them for things, like when we brought the Duke's Bakery thing up, they were very, very willing to look at it and see how to solve it for that, those few busy days that Duke's is gonna have.
Yes, they've assured us that they will. Yes, they've assured us that they will take care of that, that issue, if it means moving to do something else and leaving that roadway, whatever, they're gonna, they told, they, they assured us that they would take care of that. And they've been good.
Thank you, thank you both, and to your team.
You, Counselor?
With that, I yield.
Counselor, seat three, Counselor Kobe.
Yes, just one question. What, in terms of the train, if you can please refresh my memory, when is the ribbon cutting of the, the first transport?
You want to answer? You got that?
Yeah, so, MassDOT and MBTA, two separate entities. I would suggest, again, I meet with them almost weekly as well, I would suggest maybe that you invite Gene Fox and members from the MBTA to come give the, the council an update. I, I'll give you what I know of it. Tentatively, from what I understand, I think we're looking at mid to late summer. All of our facilities are completely constructed. I had a call today with them after the DOT call, East Taunton Station still needs some dramatic work, that, that's been some of the tie-up. But there, there's a number of testing, and, so they can't test until everything is done. So, there, there has been that delay. Everybody anticipated that, you know, for Christmas, we may be even test, testing some trains out. And as you've seen over the last, was it three weeks ago, I think, when they finally gave out that press release at the eleventh hour, that that was not going to happen, we still don't have a finite date. Right now, they're, again, tentatively talking about midsummer to late summer for actual service to begin.
So, the reason I ask that question is, the corresponding work with your department in the train, of course, I don't, it's above my pay grade in terms of the coordination, but is it, does it look like it'll...
There's no coordination to take place.
...the...
No, because MBTA is done. They're doing nothing.
Yeah, they're done.
Very good.
They have, their signage is actually shrink-wrapped for the winter, they are completely done with construction.
What triggered me on this question is there, there, there are a great deal of people, new people who've moved to Fall River, move, have moved to Fall River, and existing people who are anxiously waiting.
Yes.
Not only as a, an ex, maybe an experimental thing, to go ride the train and, you know, go up to Boston and, and point, other points, I'm sorry, but I'll just tell you, you know, I'll, I'll share a quick story. Just two days ago, I got a call at my office from an individual, I won't give you the address, they live on Rock Street, and she's a Bo, was a Boston resident, and the gentleman or husband just moved from England, and they purchased the, you know, a half condo on Rock Street, and she had some questions about the train, when, you know, is it gonna, when is it going to open, is it, we're so anxiously awaiting, we both work in Boston, and it was just, she invited me over to her home with her husband, and went in, went in, answered her questions the best I could, so, that's just one example of, you know, what struck, struck me, is the, the anticipation that people are so looking forward to utilizing that resource that we've been waiting for so long. So, that's the motivation for the question.
Yeah, that is what Dan said, we just had a, we were at a conference a week or two ago, and Gene was there and discussed that, and said that, you know, the anticipation everywhere is, is, it's a lot. Like, they know that people are waiting for this train, and they're doing their best to get that station, that one station, that's when, they had to, and I think they finished, they finally finished and got, got the acceptance on the one, the other one, which is escaping me where it was, but the Ton one is the problem, they ran into some issues at that, at that station, so...
And this very nice couple just purchased their home on Rock Street two years ago, with the anticipation that Fall River is up and coming, that's, that, that was their comment to me. So, there, there, there are so many good upsides.
Yeah, there's a lot of anticipation.
Nice family, three children, just, it was just a nice thing to see, that, with, I don't know how, what happened in other communities in terms of the experience that I'm, with this one, an experience, but I'm sure it's, the positives definitely, definitely going to outweigh the negatives, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. If I was there, I would have told those people that the people in the condo above them from Fall River have been waiting forty years, what's a few more months? They just moved there, they already went to rush to get the train done? Been waiting fifty years for this train, what's another couple of months?
And ironically, the, I'm sorry, Mr. Kamara, to talk about something personal with you, ironically, the home that she invited me to, you and I were there, were in high school when, I won't name the family, they, they owned the property, so, so it's, it was nice to go back in, and in my mind reminisce forty years ago, when the McDonald family actually owned that property.
Okay.
I yield.
You spilled the beans, Counselor.
I know, you just did.
Say you want to spill the beans, just spill the beans. Okay, please continue, any more other, Counselor in seat six, Counselor...
No, just to say, oh, was it, just to say, I did talk to Gene Fox a few weeks ago, maybe two weeks ago, and Gene said that, exactly what Dan said, they're looking at the safety, and they have to do these safety checks, because we know that there have been train derailments in other areas of the country, they want to make sure it's safe, that's all. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Continue, is there anything else, or is that, is that the...
Yep.
Counselor C one, Counselor Kobe.
So, project schedule is still on schedule?
Yes.
No delays?
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak for them, from what, from, from what I understand, maybe a little bit ahead of schedule.
Okay.
And again, depending upon what happens weather-wise, what kind of a season we have, I think we'll, whatever we gain for the rest of this construction season is probably going to be, you know, a little bit of a boss.
Bonus.
We are, we're at a hundred percent design, and like we discussed last time, this is a design-build project, so we did not come out with a full PSNE design, we came out with a base technical concept, where, that, we're still working through design, we're at a hundred percent, expecting an issue for construction probably within the next month or two, and then, when the job's all done, we will get an as-built, and the city will have access to that as well. So, we're in, we're in a, we're in a good stage, everything's pretty much ironed out, we're, we're looking very good, there's a few odds and ends, but, you know, working through construction and through some field design changes, we'll, we'll get through, but other than that, we're in, we're in a really good place.
And then, so, from a legislative standpoint, all the takings have been done, we don't need any additional takings?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, okay. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. The question I have is distribution of the land, who, do we know who's going to get it?
No, we do not, that, that has not been handed down. I, I get it, excuse me?
What are the choices?
Well, I guess they would be...
The city.
As many, I guess you can come up with an infinite number.
Well, not really.
No, no, it could be, I mean, it, it's the, it's the state's land to dispose of, the state could theoretically sell it directly to a developer, could sell it to ten developers, it could convey it to the City of Fall River body itself, it could convey it to the Redevelopment Authority, it could convey it to Joe Souza on Grinnell Street...
Joe Souza can't afford it.
If they chose to.
I know that.
Well, maybe they're just going to give it to him, you know, so, well, that, that has not been decided as of yet, we're, we're anticipating it excitedly, but I can offer, because this is a new development, I think, since the last time we came, but I did mention it, that the Redevelopment Authority was in the process of sending out an RFP for a master plan. That did go out, we did receive four super-qualified applicants. Over the next two weeks, we have interviews, they've asked me to be involved in the interview process with the four different consulting firms, and by the end of November, that will be selected, and the project go out for, for start in December, and that would be a one-year process before they gave us back the final document.
The state, the state's going to conduct those interviews?
No, 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 we, we are, the Redevelopment Authority is, is funding the master plan for, for the entire corridor. So, we should have that coming in very soon. So, during that one-year process, there will be opportunities for multiple layers of public comment, comment from you all, so I would ask you all to be involved as you most possibly, you know, as you can, through that process, so that when we get to the end, you can see the fruits of your labor come to fruition as well. But, I mean, some of the, some of the proposals are from some world-renowned firms, so it, it's very exciting that we got that kind of response.
Anybody from Vegas?
Bigger than Vegas, but we don't allow casinos, right, so, but we could change that.
Is there anything else we need to know, or we want to share with us?
What was that? I didn't hear you say that.
Is there anything else that we need to know, you want to share with us, but Counselor in seat two just raised their hand, Counselor?
No, I don't have anything else to add.
I know that, every time the waterfront urban renewal plan is changed or tweaked, and the same thing with the downtown, there's a new book that's always issued to the RDA, so that they can see what's coming down the road. This master plan, once you choose the company that will take, that will do that...
Yes.
Is it possible that the council can also get documentation, so that we can actually look and get a better understanding?
I mean, I, I would think so, you're all citizens of the City of Fall River, so I'm assuming that this would all be public information. So, I can, I can work hopefully as a liaison and, and direct the Redevelopment Authority to ensure that you're all included, either on a formal basis or informal, just like anybody else would in the city. Like I said, there will be multiple opportunities for, for public comment, public input of, of what is to go through this, through this corridor.
Thank you, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. There being no further questions, I want to thank the three of you very much for coming down and sharing that information with us, it's an exciting project, we're all glad to be a part of it, and can't wait to see the end result.
Great, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, entertain a motion to lift from the table.
Motion to lift from the table?
Second.
Yeah, Counselors, do you want to table this, instead of just leaving it in finance, so we can continue the discussion as things change?
Yes, motion to table.
Yeah.
Motion to table has been made, and a second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is now tabled. Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Lauren. Item number three, entertain a motion to lift from the table.
Motion to lift from the table?
Tabled back in September twelfth. Motion to lift has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is now lifted. Fiscal year two, twenty twenty-three quarter four budget report, was tabled on nine twelve...
Take these together, Mr. President?
It's up to you.
Yeah.
Whatever the rule of the council is, you want to make a motion to take them together?
Please.
Motion has been made to take item three and four, which is fiscal year twenty twenty-four quarter first, budget report referred on October tenth. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Will come down, please, take item three and four together? Anybody else want to say that?
She'll be here in a second, she just had to step out.
You want us to wait for her, or you want us to answer questions in her absence, or...
I don't want to hold anyone up, I'm glad to answer questions as well as I can, I know CFO Almond will be back momentarily, she's had to step out for a second, but I'm glad to do my best, and start.
Okay. I think the only Counselor's missing is Counselor Kobe, is there any questions, if you can take item twenty-three, quarter four budget report, if you want to...
Yes.
Do you want to give us a quick presentation on any changes or anything we should know about, before we begin asking questions?
Sure. I was going to start with talking about the quarter four that we provided revised, after we've gone through most of our closing entries, the school has gone through theirs. So, I just wanted to, so overall, our revenues exceeded our budget by about twelve percent. What were the driving factors in that, was we had extremely good tax revenue collection, which ended up being about one point one million higher, which we, was due to strong efforts to collect our prior year taxes and tax leave revenue. Marijuana excise tax exceeded the budget, but that was after we revised it when the law changed, and had we had to reduce it by one point seven million, which was offset by new growth. Interest income exceeded our original expectations by about three point two million, and this was due to investing in US Treasuries and negotiating with banks to get higher interest rates. And we expect very strong turnbacks. Overall, our expenditures were under budget by a three percent, which was mostly caused by significant vacancies, and our departments were very prudent in their purchases, and we strategized using ARPA funds where we could, so we could keep alleviating the pressure on the general fund. And then, Q one, I mean, it's very early to talk about that, but we're very much on target, I feel, with our revenues and our expenditures. So, at this time, I'd be ready for questions.
Are we on target, are we over, are we below?
No, we're, we're, for quarter one.
Yep.
We're on target.
Okay. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Vice President Prow.
You know, the only thing that I want to say about the budget, and I've heard some of my colleagues, and I agree, there's a lot of money in the budget for unfilled positions, vacant positions. However, you cannot have a park, a cemetery department with five workers when we have five cemeteries, there's no way. You can't have two people in tree department, if somebody's out on vacation, somebody's sick, one person alone isn't going to do anything to a tree. You've got to start filling some of those positions that are vacant. DCM needs them, water department needs them, I mean, people, you know, it's in the budget, you have money there to do it, people need the services, and sometimes people are waiting for services because of lack of manpower, and that should not be. I agree that maybe there's more, I've been here a while, so I know that that's a place where you could usually hide money, so that next year, you could throw it into free cash, we all know that. That's, that's how the city works sometimes, but we need people. Yeah, Bridget, that's what they've done in the past, maybe, you don't know, but I know, because I've been here. But, we need to fill these positions, you know? Water department is down, park department is down, and those are important, I mean, they're not only doing the parks, but they're also doing islands, I mean, you know, in the summertime, how many times you going to go through the cemetery and mow the lawn and weed whack, you know, do we look at getting summer help to maybe alleviate where you don't have to pay medical insurance, but you need to get the bodies there. I went to the Louis Latimer event that they had at the cemetery, that side of the cemetery looked good, the other side looked terrible. I don't know what they do with perpetual care money up there, but I just firmly believe that we need more help. I, I saw, but we have three litter offices, how much money have they brought in? We need more people. You had street sweepers that we bought, they weren't even registered yet, today they were lettering them, because I called and said, "Come on, and those, you don't need a CDL license for, get those on the street." I mean, and they do, when I call and say, "Hey, I heard this and that, can you guys put that out?" And I, I know that, that they do, and Charlie tries to do a good job, just like Al does, but I hear it from people that, you know, they're waiting for stuff, and you have the positions, please fill them, it's not going to affect your budget, the money is there.
Can I respond to you?
Sure.
So, I'm in agreement with you.
Good.
We do want it, we are trying to fill them, that's not, I wasn't saying that we're hard, and they actually had, I think, I don't know if it was the first time, we had a, at City Hall...
Job fair?
The job fair, I mean, nobody's trying to not fill them, that's definitely not happening right now.
I mean, I really think something like the plumber and electrician, you're not going to get any plumber or electrician to come in and work in this city for twenty-three dollars an hour, when they can make a lot more money, so we need to be cognizant of that. You know, have anybody hired an electrician lately? I have, believe me, I paid a lot more than twenty-three fifty an hour. I haven't had a plumber, because when I'm stuck, I call Ray Mitchell, and he usually comes and helps me, truth be told.
I would have called.
But, no, I, I mean, you know, people are paying taxes, they want services, let's try to see what more we can do to get people to come in and apply for jobs here, and if we have to look at shifting salaries and that, okay, so if you have four openings, maybe we fill two, but with a higher pay, so the money is still there, you know what I mean? Maybe something like that would, would work out, but you need to, you need to get people to come to work. I know it's hard, a lot of people don't want to work, but, you know, if people are paying taxes, they want their services.
If I may, if I may, you're absolutely right, I mean, there's, you know, it's, it's, and there's no easy solution to it, as you know, there's a lot of conversation in different possible proposed solutions that I, I'm not going to put out, because they're speculative, that I, I'm not going to put out because they're speculative, but there is one that I can tell you is a, is a for sure, which is that this week, we are going to be launching a CDL program, a training program in-house. So, we actually have a certified trainer now, City Fall River, who can train applicants to get their CDL, which would save the applicant close to $3,000. Would allow us to, to home grow our CDL drivers. We're not charging the employee anything for the program. The city is funding the cost. It's sort of based upon the idea that we're going to pay for the academy for police officers. It was a great idea that the mayor and Al Olivera and Charlie Denme came up with, that they're putting into place. And so, I can tell you that that is happening and certainly it's not enough, but it's a start.
I mean, I think that's good, but also the career center, if somebody out there is out of work, unemployed, wants to get a CDL license, you can go to the career center and they'll pay for you to get your CDL license too. So, I'm glad that we're doing it for our own employees here, but, you know, for people to know, you can go to the career center. There's other places that will assist in, in getting things like that. And, you know, one of the things is if you look at some of the unions we have, like APSME, what do they have? The dispatchers, clerks, and water department are all together. They're very different departments and different jobs. And water department, they need a lot of certifications, and we're still, we still have poor Cherry Sullivan coming in, working there because we don't have the manpower, but we've lost some good people because they can go somewhere else and get a better pay. So, can you blame them? I don't blame anybody who can go someplace else and get $10,000, $15,000 more for their family. I don't blame them. So, we need to look at that and I don't know if they can separate positions there or what have you. I don't know what the...
So, with APSME, because of the problem that you absolutely are right in raising, that, that there are so many subgroups within the APSME bargaining unit, it's almost impossible to strike a deal that really works for everybody and really acknowledges all the issues. So, we introduced something with the last bargaining round, which was job reevaluation for the individual subunits. If they applied, made their case, we would evaluate. We did a few increases last year. I don't think the program was well understood, so we're going to do a lot more education this year. Because you're absolutely right. It's like, you know, really 10 different subgroups that all have very different jobs, very different priorities, very different qualifications. So, we tried to address that and we're going to continue looking at different ways to do that. That was our first step last, last year.
Well, I was at the water department last week and the, a new person that's there is just taking their final test, so that's good. While I'm talking about that, and I'm not probably supposed to say it now, but I'm going to try to sneak it in, the water department building that we built is people are moving in there. They're working out of there. So, why not have a day where the citizens who paid for that building can go and have an open house and tour that building?
It's a great idea.
Write it down. Maybe we can have that happen because I think people should see what they paid for. Just a thought. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Seth, I have just one question, follow-up to what Councilor Perez was talking about. The city's going to pay for the CDL license. What's the commitment from the individual that receives the license? How many years did he commit to staying within the city or is he just going to move on to a higher-paying job as others have done?
So, because we're doing it in-house and we're managing the costs, as long as we can get one snow season from that CDL driver without, and the alternative of having to hire a private, it would pay for itself. So, we're not attaching the, the same multi-year commitment that we did for police.
So, if he starts, gets his license in September and he works till March, he can leave?
I can't speak to exactly the details, but I'll, I, just because we had the conversation earlier this afternoon. I know that we're not putting a, a five or, you know, more year commitment for the CDL licensing. I'm not sure whether it's just going to be a one-year commitment, but it's going to be shorter than the police because the cost is low for the city and the benefit, the return on the investment is significant.
You're going to lose a lot of individuals that way. You're going to keep playing this game over and over, but that's up to you. I think more than one snow season is what you need to get out of these people. And if you want to pay them more to have the CDL license because they're going for a little bit of money right now. Anyone with a CDL license can go anywhere and get more than what we're offering to pay. Something that should be revisited as well. With that, Councilor Seats, number five, Councilor Pelletier.
Thank you. To Linda's point, I done a little remodeling my house. Electrician for two, $150 an hour. You don't think that guy is only making 23 that's working for him? And another point that I made and made before, you've lost a lot of good people here in the city of Fall River. And just about everybody who left has made more money in these different little towns from $5,000 to $10,000 to stop. And I think the only reason why some of the people stay here, I, I think they're crazy. They're not looking for something else, but it's because they got their vacations. They got this. They got their tenure. They got everything else. And I guess they just don't want to go out and look for another job. But you know, and we know, the people that left and the kind of money they're making a lot better. And, and that's a starting for you. You got the water department. I'm talking to a kid today. He was getting a sticker. He says some of the jobs are paying $16 an hour. How can you live on that? You can't live on that. Yeah, but I'm getting my CDL and I'm going to get this. I'm going to get that. Well, good luck to you. But how, how do you survive? I don't know how they survive. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Seats, seven, Councilor Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question on EMS enterprise fund from quarter four. So, even with the transfer that was made last year of 1.2 million, they end up having a surplus of 2.7. So, now, looking ahead to quarter one of this year, do we anticipate further expenses this time around versus last year?
So...
Or, or let me add something else, and/or additional investment into EMS that will then, some of that money will be used for?
So, right now, we still have to go through free, free cash certification, but we're also, as we're going through all the side funds, and there was a lot of, you know, FEMA expenses and there's been, you know, things that are being disallowed. So, we still need to evaluate that, and a lot of that was EMS-related. So, I can't give you a straight answer because I, we're dealing with the federal government and, and MEMA. So, and I do know there's also, you know, looking at investing in facilities for EMS, so...
Which, which, that will lead to my next question. So, are there plans in the works for this fiscal year to further invest into EMS? Like we talked about, a building or buildings, training programs, et cetera?
So, there's, there's two major things happening with EMS, is that they are on the verge of standing up an EMS training school. So, their training department is, has been working on that certification so we can actually train our own paramedics and, and emergency medical technicians, who then become paramedics ultimately. The second thing is that they are continuing to invest in center fire station, really going little by little, getting that to where they need it to go. There's a plan at this point, so they know, the first thing that needed to happen was environmental, actually getting the ventilation, and that's where it needs to be. So, now it's facilities. The rest of it would just be EMS's ordinary scheduling of investment in itself, a new vehicle, you know, every year, that sort of thing. And they're really good. Deputy Fons and Chief Olivera, and actually Captain Sylvia, who's the head of the Mobile Integrated Health Division, they do a phenomenal job in planning for growth. So, there's not any unexpected large investments aside from the same facility they've been investing in, central fire sta, center fire station, and the significantly minor investment comparatively into standing up the training school.
And do we have any idea when that training school may be up and running?
It will be within this fiscal year.
This fiscal year, okay. Thank you. I yield.
Three, Councilor Seats, one, Councilor, Councilor Seats, one, Councilor Seats.
Thank you. So, you had just mentioned investments a couple of times. So, there, there's a change in the general law that allows, instead of the legal list, to be invested for trust funds and stabilization accounts to go use the prudent investor rule. Are we going to be coming down? I won't know.
Am I going to come down and ask you for that?
Are you folks, yeah, going to come down to get that general law accepted?
So, I don't really have any intention right now of changing the way we're treating that with prudent. I mean, I think we have enough other things in the fire that are a little more concerning that we want to be prioritizing.
But I guess it just, it, it gives you...
The prudent investor.
Yeah, it just gives you more, more flexibility in terms of what you can invest the, the funds in, right, versus just the legal list, which is very, very limited. So, just for rate of return for our stabilization accounts and trust funds, that's...
So, what we've done is we've, I mean, we have looked at it. I haven't, I'm not ready to make a commitment to come down. What we have done is we have moved the stabilization funds out of money markets and they're invested in short-term and up to one-year treasuries, which are actually yielding higher than the stock market right now. So, that's what we've done.
And then just fourth quarter, so I guess my only question for the fourth quarter is just, I know we were having conversations about the police department and the collective bargaining agreement that was set forth. So, what was the final number for the cost of that first year for the?
Well, with vacancies, I mean, they still are going to have a strong, a turnback.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I mean, they still had significant vacancies. It did stop. I did talk to the chief at a recent meeting, and he felt that the contract did stop people from leaving, but they still have, I think, 24 vacancies.
No, that's why I asked the question because when you, it's a little bit sleazy when you see the transfer. It's only $253,000 that was transferred into salaries, and that's just taking the salary portion of it. I'm sure there was other financial components that were aside, but I'm just trying to get that full one year because I know we were going back and forth in terms of what the, the actual cost was. So, I'm just trying to figure out what the, the actual cost was for year one of that collective bargaining agreement.
I don't think we broke that out. I can get that for you though?
Yeah.
Thanks. I apologize. I will make sure I get that for you this week.
All right. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Seats, two?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Are we doing either or? Are we sticking with quarter four first?
Whatever you choose, Councilor. We took them both together, so you choose.
All righty. Quarter one, the first page in the actuals.
Actual expenditures or revenues?
The very, very first page, quarter one, actuals. As soon as you open the book. Yep, right there. The overlay account, there's no dollar amount, but yet we have paperwork in our agenda packet because you're looking for an appropriation of $150,000 to add to the overlay account, which will bring it up to $1.1 million. But at the present time, prior to us voting, it's $950,000, but it's not shown.
So, it is. It's actually shown in the expenditures. So, it's the presentation. So, the way it is in UNIS, it's in the expenditures. We move it into the revenue at the, at the close of the year because that's how we have to do it for our, all of our reporting, but it's actually, it's in your expenditures.
On page 40 in UNIS.
I don't know the page number. I'm going to look for it.
Under city expenses?
Yes.
I believe it was page 40.
It is on, yes, it is on page 40. So, you'll see right now there's currently $950,000.
Yep.
So, it's just, it's the presentation.
Okay.
So, what happens is, is your overlay gets netted with your revenue of your real estate taxes in the budget that we show you when we pass it. But the way it's handled in UNIS is they put it as an expenditure and then we close it out at the end of the year to revenues.
Which is why it's absent on that page.
Exactly.
Okay. My other question is, under trust and agency, you have a transfer into the general fund as revenue of $4.5 million? I'm back on that first page.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Sorry. What trust fund did that come out of?
So, those are, that transfer of the $4.5 million, that was the ARPA funds that we budgeted in the general fund.
So, it came out of trust and agency?
That's just how the, the presentation of it. It came out of a, it was, it's a grant that was transferred in to the general fund.
Then you transferred it into the, okay. Now, where is that represent, represented in UNIS or isn't it?
It is. It's, that's why you're seeing it in the actuals because we've already, we've actually made the transfer.
You've already, all right.
Yeah.
Um, let's see. Page, what I would consider page six, if you turn the pages, under community service, health department expenses, 46% has been used in the first quarter. Original appropriation, $26,000, revised $76,000, and 46% has been expended.
Well, I know there was a transfer in that you all, that you voted for, for the opioid money that was transferred in there, and then that was then, purchase order was put in, so I'm, I would have to look at the details of that.
So, the, the number is $49,900, which is the amount of that second contract for the opioid money. So, the first contract was, was for the analysis of how to set up the opioid task force and committee. The next is the actual consultation to help that money get distributed, and that increase, the adjustment, is exactly the amount of what that second contract is. So, that's what that represents.
Okay, but the, the 40%, 46% that was already expended, is that typically what happens in the first quarter or was there another reason for it?
Well, so what you'll see by sometimes those expenditures is because if it's, there's a contract, the purchase order will get, will be put in and it, and it encumbers it to expense it.
Okay.
So, even though the money's not spent, it's spoken for. So, so we don't run afoul of, you know, thinking that we have money that we don't have, that's, you know, it's already committed.
Because it's encumbered, you already, you already just show it as spent or used or expended.
But it hasn't been, it hasn't been paid out yet.
The next page under general government, mayor's expenses are 61%. Not that it's a huge dollar amount, but just curious what drives the...
So, a lot of those mayor expenses, and I would check the details, but a lot of those are the MMA, the M, I think of them, like the ma, I forget what it is, mayoral association fees that we have to pay, and you pay most of those fees upfront at the beginning of the year.
Okay. Let's see. Oh, what did I see? Auditors. City, the auditors expenses, under financial services on the page above. I'm sorry, I skipped over. That's at 60%.
So, I think that's, that's the new version of Patriot, right?
No, that's not in auditors. Patriot's not in auditors.
Oh, I was looking at assessors. I apologize. All right, we're still right where we are in assessors.
So, the auditor's expense, yes, because we have, we've had to have additional support helping in the auditor's office because we haven't had a position.
So, that 60% part of that would be the...
Clifton Larson.
Mr. Iacaboni consultants, that sort of thing?
Yes.
And so, it, that drives their expenses.
More Clifton Larson than Mr. Iacaboni. He's significantly reduced his time. But I think in anticipation of knowing that our assistant auditor would become the auditor, I think we ramped up the training just to make sure that we were, you know, eyes dotted, t's crossed, and he's doing a great job.
Okay, so even though he's reduced his, his hours, 10 hours a week still represents $2250 a week, $2,250 if he's getting $225 an hour.
That's correct.
It's still significant. I mean, are we close to not needing?
Absolutely.
The extra, the extra help, et cetera.
We are, we are close to a time when Mr. Iacaboni will no longer be a contractor with the city. He's done an incredible service, but we are nearing the time when he's going to be very happily retired.
I'm sure he has, but it's come at, at a significant expense to the taxpayer as well. Under city expenses, page 27, no, I'm going to go to page 24 first. I'm sorry. On page 24, high streets and highways, rent and leases. There's $30,000 appropriated, revised with still $30,000. 46.9% has been expended. What are we renting or leasing at this point?
Let me find it.
Page 24, under city expenses, streets, highways, expenses, one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh line down.
Rents and leases. So, there are, there is some equipment. There was a small excavator that was being leased for some period of time. There is, from time to time, equipment that's rented or leased to fill in for equipment that's down when we absolutely need it. I can dig in with Mr. Olivera to find out exactly what that represents, but that would be my, that would be what I think that probably represents.
Yeah, because we did make significant, I mean, we made some significant purchases so that we could avoid this sort of problem, so...
Absolutely, but not all of it's in. So, like, we just got the streets we... So, like, we just got the street sweepers, as, as Councilor Preller mentioned, those came in, what, two weeks ago maybe? Graffiti machine came in a while back, but there's still other things that are, that are still out there, so, you know, I think in the future you're gonna see that reduce, but right now I think we're still waiting for a few things.
Because again, this is a case of we're only in the first quarter, and 46.9% has been expended, so that's a bit of a concern. And speaking of the, because you brought up the, the street sweepers, I've seen them, other people have seen them, but I did have somebody ask the question, in the past, when they were going to street sweep particular streets, they used to put up signage.
Yep.
Don't have your car here on a given day at this, at this time, because the street sweeper's gonna come by. They're not doing that. They're just bringing the sweet sweeper down the middle of the street, which really
It's not effective.
Isn't helping the situation.
I'll make a note.
So if we could go back to using the signage and, and making the use of the street sweepers be as effective as possible would be great.
I will look at that.
And lastly, on page 27, under city expenses, can you explain on, again, other rent, not a big dollar amount, but 80% under solid waste disposal, again, what are we renting?
We're page, Councilor, 27?
Uh, page 27.
Halfway down.
Solid waste disposal expenses. One, two, three, fourth line item.
Seven through two. That is a forklift rental that we are paying for monthly right now, because we do not have a forklift of our own. There's a, so this, I have a sheet here that I, resulted from a conversation I had with DCM today regarding some of the rentals and additional expenses and things that we might have incurred in the first quarter. And so we're looking at getting that from a rental to something we actually own, because we should have it, we need it. We're moving around carts and all sorts of other things around the yard. We're doing a significant deep dive into the many, many carts that were distributed during the Cray administration and getting barcodes on all of those, so they're trackable and they're accountable. I think you're gonna see an announcement pretty soon around a new approach to solid waste based upon what we've been doing for the last three to four months.
Including no longer picking up business trash?
So I'm not gonna say we're gonna no longer pick up business trash, but there is gonna be a solution to that that's not going to come at enormous expense to the city, which right now it does. I think there's 350 or more businesses getting their trash picked up for free. It's an expansion of what the original contract had. It's not consistent with the original contract, and we are working on a solution.
Long time coming.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, significant amount of taxpayer dollars has gone into something it should not have gone into. We've had that conversation so many times that, under the solid waste disposal, it shows a 73%, that 73% has been expended. Can you explain that?
Sure. The, this is similar to what CFO Alman mentioned before, where something's encumbered. So what we actually did with that is we did an open PO for the first three quarters, so approximately $2.5 million. The last quarter is always a more expensive quarter, so it goes about $8,000 to $850,000 per quarter until the last quarter, when it could be closer to a million. So not knowing what that cost would be, this, you know, all sorts of additional costs that, that are part of that, that last quarter. They did a three-quarter open PO, they're working off of that. We haven't spent three-quarters of our, of our trash budget. We're right at 24% of the solid waste budget. That just shows that that money is encumbered, just not yet spent.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk, to speak to that, because I know that was a concern.
Yeah, that was a serious concern.
Absolutely.
Um, let's see. Right under that, there's a 49% expended, solid waste disposal, and then this one is solid waste disposal other. It's right underneath.
I believe that is a combination of tire recycling and paint removal. So tires, paint, mattresses, a number of those things have, have become
Expensive to dispose of.
Hugely expensive. And so there's been some increases there, we're looking at some different options. We have some very promising leads on different ways to, to deal with those, because right now it's just not sustainable.
So legitimately, that's 50% of that budget has been expended?
Um, yes, but I would say that some of it is equipment for the, the barcoding too. That's the other part that, that I have a note on. So there was an initial investment at the start of the fiscal year to start dealing with, you know, the, the carts, getting our, a handle on how many carts are out there. We're about 95% finished with that effort. Part of that increase is the initial investment at the start of the year into the scanning machines, because they're, they're expensive, so.
Okay. And then the, the last line is recycling other, 46%. Is, are we, is that a similar situation? What, what recycling, what area of recycling does that relate to?
So that, I believe, is also an open PO. That represents about half the year, let me just make sure I'm right on that. And that, I think we're actually closer to 23% on that in terms of actual expended, but that's been encumbered for about half the budgeted amount.
Okay. Um, so again, how many businesses do we have in Fall River?
I don't know off the top of my head.
500, 1,000? Would you guess?
I, I, I've learned over the last almost two years not to guess.
Not to guess.
It's just, it's, it's never a good
The reason I asked the question, and I could be off. Last I knew, last count, we had 303 businesses at a count of 664 carts being picked up every week. That's significant.
It's huge, and I actually think it's a few more carts than that.
There might be.
In the, in the investigation we've done, I think we've got a real number, and it might be a little higher.
So, yeah, so I, I hope, I, I honestly, truly hope for once it's legitimately being addressed, and that the taxpayers can get a little bit of relief, the relief they should have had a long time ago. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C. Seven, Councilor Pozon?
Quick question on the recycling, on the pilot program that we did for the cardboard. Any update and any promise with that so far?
I don't have an update that I can share publicly at this point, but it was extremely successful.
Is the pilot over?
It is over, but I think there's plans for an expanded pilot.
Okay.
Well, not really a pilot anymore, but an expanded test, because the response is different depending on what's, what part of the city you're in. So there's kind of a, a look at tweaking what we did to see if we can make it more successful in some of the other parts of the city where it wasn't received as readily.
Do you think the overall idea that the pilot was successful in its first shot?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and when do you feel we'll get some more information about possibly a revised or expanded pilot program?
I can talk to Director Olivera and Director Denme tomorrow and find out. I think we, he and I, or the, the, the group talked about this maybe sometime in the last 10 days, and I, I don't have a date. So let me get a date for you, and then I'll let the rest of the council know.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C. One, Councilor D.
Thank you. Just more of a statement than a, a question. So I'd be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to comment on what Councilor C. Two has mentioned, because I, I think it's pertinent to a lot of the discussions that we've been having as of late in terms of what the role and responsibility is of, of the city council. And I think her line of questioning with regard to business trash highlights what I've been saying. We, as a council, can say to the administration, "Stop picking up business trash." We've got an ordinance that says we will not pick up business trash. Stop picking up business trash. Save us money. Guess what? Still picking up business trash, right? Because we have no authority to tell the administration to stop picking up business trash. Okay? We've already done everything that we can from a legislative standpoint. We've got an ordinance that says you're not gonna pick up business trash. We've reviewed the budget. We say, "Can we save some money? Stop picking up business trash." We've had this conversation for over two years, right?
Four.
Okay, four years, and we know that we should not be picking up business trash, and we're still in the same place where business trash is still being picked up. So for those that constantly want to come down to the city council, ask the city council what their plan is and what their approach is gonna be from the day-to-day operation of the city. The city council has no control or authority over that. And this is just a perfect example of what I've been trying to explain to folks. So I'd be remiss if I didn't point that out. You know, I think we could, if we wanted to, during the budget process, reduce the budget by what we would say is an estimated cost, but again, it would be an estimated cost, because we don't have those actual numbers coming down. So, but outside of that, and the impact to the city budget and not, not doing our, our due diligence to see what that impact would truly mean to the department would be somewhat irresponsible, but in terms of the fact that we have been suggesting, as a council, put a resolution in, it's outside our, our control. And I just want to make that clear. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. There being no further questions? Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
How are we doing with the reports for the next quarter? Will we get them on time?
We filed these reports on time.
So yes.
Didn't file the last one on time, we had to wait. If what quarter report wasn't filed on time?
Surprise.
Item number five, in accordance to provisions of Chapter 44, Section 32 of the Massachusetts General Laws, I recommend to file appropriations to Yago Body, that the sum of $308,843 be in the same as hereby appropriated to the reserve fund from the tax levy. There a motion?
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer to full council has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion carries. Item number two, that the sum of $150,000 be in the same as appropriated to the overlay account from the tax levy.
May I just, Mr. President?
Is there a motion for us?
Can we just?
I need a motion for us, Councilor.
I, I was just wondering if we can just get an explanation as to the reasoning behind some of these transfers?
Excuse me?
I'm just looking for the reasoning behind some of these transfers.
Yeah, we can call him back down if you like, Councilor Finance.
Yeah.
Could you come down, Seth?
I apologize, I was
And, and
We're still
And Bridgette. Call Bridgette.
Can you finish? There's a question on the
150.
So could you just quickly explain the reasoning behind the transfers? I know item number three is pretty self-explanatory in terms of the Bristol Aggie with the assessment requirement coming in, but the other two?
So, as, as you know, this, around this time, we get where our new growth really comes in at. So we know that we have additional new growth, and we would like to put some more additional funding to the reserve fund from new growth and increase the overlay. Because that, based on discussions with council and the assessor's office, we're going, we should be increasing that by 150,000.
So can I just continue to ask a question?
Absolutely, Councilor. We're in finance.
So just in terms of, so the tax levy, so you're just looking to appropriate it as opposed to just let it fall through free cash?
Correct.
So you would have that ability for the appropriation?
Yes.
To make transfers into the reserve fund? So the, the overlay account, I understand the overlay account. Where are we, so the assessment on the overlay, do we need more money in the overlay account?
Yes.
So typically, I haven't seen, and I know we've seen the 950 coming in as an expense, which is just coming out of the taxes back into the, the overlay account. Have we done an assessment as, in terms of what the outstanding liability is versus what's in that account?
Yes.
And where are we in comparison to that?
So, based on the conversations that I have had with the council that works on all the abatements and land court and everything, and with the assessor's office, and because of their statistical reval, they feel they are requesting these funds in there based on things that they know that are not available to be discussed right now publicly.
Do you, I, I guess, does the 150,000 cover it? Is there a surplus? Is there, are we keeping a?
No, because as you know, you don't want to go more than the five-year, you want to pay attention to your five-year average, so we, we took that into account when we were looking at this as well.
All right, and then I guess just for, for those folks that are not familiar with the overlay account, so just a quick educational piece is, is once we get, we have our real estate tax, money is set aside into an overlay account, which is essentially a, a savings account for any type of abatements that come through that were required. If somebody's questioning their valuation, that's where the money comes out of. So it's in a separate checking account, and at times you just want to be able to review that, and if there is any surplus in there, you can use that in, in, with the vote of the assessors, the board of assessors, move that money back into revenue account for the, for the city. So that's why I asked that question. Okay, sorry. And then the Bristol Aggie is just the, the assessment, right?
Yes, the assessment that they provided us when we were preparing the budget, and then when we got our actual invoice, was different.
Okay. Is that?
Because most
Mostly because of the debt?
No, that, it's actually because of the capital, they
That's what I was gonna ask, is because of the debt, the building assessment?
Yeah.
All right. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Item number three, that the sum of $31,000
Did we do item two, Mr. President?
We're doing item two now.
I thought you said item three, okay.
I did, we just finished item, so we move on. Item three, item two's all done.
But did we make a motion to refer that to full council?
We don't need a motion to refer, because it's already in the agenda in the full council.
Okay, all right.
Any more question for item two? I thought that was the last question.
No.
So we're all done with item two then, as I said. Item number three, that the sum of $31,248,064 be in the same as hereby appropriated to the intergovernmental expense Bristol agricultural assessment from the reserve fund. It's an increase due to tuition, tuition debt assessment adjusted on September 29, 2023. Any questions?
No.
Pretty simple solution there. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
No, before that, we have one individual who wishes to speak. Danny Robelad, subject matter, Bank Street Armory.
Got it in?
You got it?
He's tapped it, I'm good.
You need help?
Lord, it's
It was over there.
I probably don't even need a mic, but
No, we got it, we'll fix it.
Got it?
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Council President Kamara, members of the council, good evening. Before I begin, I want to say that I'm here as a private citizen tonight, and I'm only speaking for myself and not any, not as a member of any board or commission that I may serve on. You know, I'm reminded tonight of the late Councilor Al Alves and the late Councilor John Mitchell, and they, uh, John Madeiras, excuse me, and both of them said, "This would have been a wonderful job if they never had to vote." I can see Councilor Alves sitting in Sean's seat right now. And tonight, a Fall River gem is on the agenda. I don't know what the plans could be for that building, because nothing was ever studied. I do know that I'm not a huge fan of the CPA, but if there was ever one project that deserves CPA money, it's the Bank Street Armory. It's a historic building, it's a cultural building, and it's, it can be revitalized. To let this go would be an absolute crime. We talk about, ARPA money's been plugged into the budget for the last two years. We bonded more money in this city in the last decade
been a wonderful job if they never had to vote. I can see Councilor Alves sitting in Sean's seat right now. And tonight, a Fall River gem is on the agenda. I don't know what the plans could be for that building because nothing was ever studied. I do know that I'm not a huge fan of the CPA, but if there was ever one project that deserves CPA money, it's the Bank Street Armory. It's a historic building, it's a cultural building, and it's, it can be revitalized. To let this go would be an absolute crime. We talk about, Opera money's been plugged into the budget for the last two years. We bonded more money in this city in the last decade than I can shake a stick at. I remember the old, now demolished, Drefy High School. I remember, I don't know if it was a, I believe it was a separate bond for a football field that totaled 10 to 15 million dollars, just for a football field. So I think to let this, to let this project go without further study, without possible bonding, without CPA money, without other conversations being had, would be an absolute travesty. And I say, this is the last, the last major vote of this council term. Be on the right side of preserving a piece of Fall River's history. Thank you very much. Thank you, Danny. Entertaining motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn finance.
Second.
Motion is made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Finance is now adjourned. The regular city council meeting will begin in five minutes. Councilors, please take your seats. City council, please come to order. Quick, we'll call the room.
Councilors Kadeem?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libbidi?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Herrera?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chair please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing to salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Court?
Mr. President, the first item before you is a communication from the mayor and the order for the Bank Street Armory proposal review and recommendation, which was objected to at the.
Motion to grant, leave, to withdraw.
Second. A motion to lift the item from the table.
Motion to lift item from the table.
Second.
Motion to lift the item from the table has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to grant, leave, to withdraw.
Second.
Motion to grant, leave, to withdraw has been made and seconded. Under motion, councilor, seat two.
Yeah, the reason, you know, I think I see, I mean, I voted no, two times before, but I think at this point, we can all see an avenue. We can see an avenue of funding. We see a community that obviously doesn't want this building turned over or destroyed. I think it can be a vibrant building again, and if we can get federal monies, we definitely know we can get CPA funding. There is funding available out there. You know, just, just the envelope of the building, securing it to make sure there is no further damage, is not going to be $5 million. CPC monies can be put into that immediately. So with that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor.
Can I say something?
Councilor, seat six, councilor vice president, prayer.
I mean, the only thing that I'd like to add is, this is not anything new. I put in a resolution in April to look at what we were going to do with the Armory, and we didn't get it in this council until July. And I just feel like it's moving too fast. You hear what people are saying, if there is federal money available, let's apply for it. John Brant, they said they could give us 5 million. You're not going to fix the Armory overnight. You might not do it in a year, but let's start planning and have something. The youth in our community really have little to do, especially when the winter months come. You have CD rec in small buildings playing volleyball in a courtroom. I mean, come on. You say you care about youth, well, put your money where your mouth is, and let's do something for the youth. Elderly can use that building, and that was the home of our veterans. Veterans get quarters money every year to maintain their quarters. They're going to be putting money into that building. They still have things in that building. And I was in that building because we were looking at some decorations we had put there. There's a group of people that want to decorate the carousel for the month of December and have an event there. I was in there. The basketball court area, that hardwood floor is pretty good. In the front, coming in, there's a little bit of issue there that needs to be done. You know, I've talked to Bricklayers Union, the whole building doesn't have to be repainted, did certain sections. Some of the roof has already been fixed. Just, you know, I agree with some people that came and spoke and said, we'll try. That's our motto, but we're not trying. And, you know, administration puts groups together. Counselor, Deion and I were on the Trash Task Force. Oh, what happened to that? That left. Then they had the Opera money, a counselor was on there, you know. So I don't think that any of these counselors would not want to work to sit down and assist the administration in, let's look at a plan. There are people in the Historical Society, the Preservation Society, that would like to come forward. Every time we do things in this city, we never think of calling people from Historical or Preservation to see what they think. Why do we have these boards if we're not going to listen to their input? I'll give it leave to withdraw, I'll give it a motion to table. I just think you need to whoa, pull on these horses, hang on, think this through before just voting. And it's got nothing to do with any developer or anything, but what are we doing for the residents of our community, and who are we here to serve? There is funding available. So if that's what's holding some of my colleagues up, I can tell you that John Brant said they could get 5 million. They couldn't give us 10, but they could give us 5. I don't know, I just think it's a building worth saving. But with that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor, seat one, Councilor Kadeem?
Thank you. So I, you know, I find myself going back and forth, and I, you know, here's the issue. I don't love, and I've said this from day one, I do not love the proposal that's being suggested for the Bank Street Armory. I don't think we need more housing, and quite frankly, I think, I was at a, I was at a TIF board meeting on Monday, and it just kind of reinforced the dislike for the proposal that was there, because I mean, I think we've, we reviewed three different TIFs, all of them which are creating additional market rate housing, and it just, I don't know that we need more market rate housing at the Bank Street Armory. With that being said, I respect what everybody is saying in terms of CPA money. You know, I was the one that brought up whether or not CPA money was even considered when we have in the conversation. My concern, and the biggest concern that I have, is that we can all sit here and say that we want to use CPA funds for this project. John Brant can say that he wants to give us CPA funding. However, we do not submit the application. And again, this is where I come back to, the community needs to understand what our local government is, right? We are a legislative body. We cannot force the mayor to submit an application to CPC, nor can we force CPC to give us the money. There needs to be an application, and we can't then just say, by the way, we want to do this project or that project. We can only approve the projects that have been submitted to us by CPC. So if CPC decides that they do not want to submit a project to us, we have no authority or jurisdiction to suggest that the money go to another project, right? So again, it comes back down to, this is what's submitted to us, right? This is what we have to deal with. We either agree with it, or we reject it, okay? And then we hope that they're listening to what we're saying and telling them that we want to see this money spent for this purpose. I don't disagree with Mr. Robelad in terms of the statement. I support the CPA. I think it's a phenomenal tool for what it's used for, and the money that's coming in. But I will say that I think there are, communities do a better job of utilizing CPA monies than the city of Fall River. There's so much money that is going out to private organizations for, you know, for them to, additional money for their renovation projects, whatever the case may be. We never see enough quality projects that are coming back that are going to benefit the community. So I don't disagree with them. This is probably the best project that would come down from the CPC if there was funding for the Bank Street Armory. My concern, however, is how do we get the administration on board? We've all said it, we've heard from the administration that this is not a priority. I've said this before, that, you know, we've supported funding coming down, debt coming down for, or borrowing, I should say, coming down for fire stations. We've talked about, you know, increasing, you know, budgets for POCs and RECs. We've had conversations that we just talked about business trash. Do away with the business trash, let's save $2 million. Again, all falling on deaf ears. And I recognize, and I'm on the administration's side as well, which is why I try to make sure we walk that fine line and that we understand what our roles and responsibilities are, because they may have plans and views of what's going on, because this all ties into a pool of money. So with that being said, one, we haven't been told, or at least I don't have the document in front of me, and I haven't seen a dollar amount, what it would require to fix the Bank Street Armory, to what extent. So in order to take a educated vote, not knowing what that dollar amount, is it $10 million, is it $15 million, is it $20 million? I'm not sure. And to what extent? What's the use? What's the end goal? I personally, and I've said this before, I'd like to see some offices in there, potentially the, you know, the court being maybe rented out, do an RFP, let somebody have the right to utilize that space, maybe some revenue sharing aspect to it. I mean, I know Council Pereira's talked about the veterans going in there, there are so many different opportunities that's going on. But I think we need to consider this, and without having a conversation with the administration, a real detailed conversation, at least from my standpoint, because I ran the numbers on a debt service at $20 million. Let's just assume that the project costs $20 million. On a 30-year bond at 3.5% interest, I know it's probably going to be higher than that, but that's just what I put in there. It's just under $1.1 million per year, right? So then if you say, okay, maybe we get, you know, the, we get the CPC, or we get the mayor to agree to submit an application for CPC, they give us $5 million, that comes down to $15 million that we would, we would bond, our debt service would be at 815,000. That's assuming that it was at 20 million. If we're talking about renovations at 10 million, right, without any CPC money, that cost to us is $543,000 per year for 30 years, based on the 3.5%. If we get $5 million from CPC on that, then we're talking about $271,000 coming from the town, $271,000 per year for the next 30 years, coming from CPC, which they have the authority to bond. Does that make it more patable?
Yes.
Right? I would say yes, right? But again, this comes back down to the fact that, and this is my concern, if the administration is not committed to maintaining this building and holding the building, all we are doing, and this is why I got frustrated when we're saying, when people are saying that we're being bought, right? It's not about being bought, it's by, it's the fact that if we cannot force the administration to do something, so if they determine that it is not a priority, and they do the bare minimum to that building, and it continues to deteriorate, then we're going to have a problem, because the building that we say has so much potential is going to be in worse shape. And that's the concern that I have. And I appreciate I've had the conversation with, I got to be honest, this is probably the most conversation that I've had with any citizen, leading up to it. The first two votes, I didn't have any conversations with anybody, and now we're going on to the third vote, and it just seems like I'm bumping into everybody in East Providence, and I mean, it's absolutely mind-boggling, the number of people that I'm running into, which by the way, and I just want to clarify, if anybody knows me, I do not get persuaded. You know, I just, I try to vote my conscience, I try to vote based on the information that's in front of me, vote on what I feel is in the best interest of the city of Fall River, and that's what I do. So that being said, I cannot take a vote right now, and I was questioning why Council Pereira, at the last meeting, was going to object, what that would do. You know, I think she benefited from it, because had I not gone to the TIF board meeting, had I not had a conversation with a couple of folks in terms of new revenue, new revenue sources coming down in the CPC, that I would, I would still be firmly set on, yes, a yes vote for giving it to the developer, to have it developed so that we can preserve that building as it currently stands, and it continues to be part of the landscape of Fall River. That being said, I'm not convinced right now that we cannot do both, preserve that building to make sure that it is in the landscape of Fall River and continues to be part of the landscape of Fall River, but that also that has a, a community benefit to the generation. And I will say, there are a lot of people that are coming in, and there's sentimental value behind that, right? That, you know, I went there, that was the first circus that I went to, I played basketball there, and we've all have stories in terms of the connection that that building has. But I think sometimes we've got to remove that emotional component of making decisions and make sure that we're making the right decisions. So that being said, there is a sentimental value, but from my standpoint, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the decision that I'm making is based on what is in the best interest of the city, what's in the best interest of that building, and making sure that it's preserved. So that being said, I personally do not have enough information to make a very conscious decision, and one that I can sleep with at night. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to table.
Second.
To give myself the opportunity to speak more, more length with the administration to see what their hesitation is, whether or not there's any willingness to really even explore multiple funding opportunities, things of that nature. And based on that, you know, if we come back in two weeks, we take it from the table, maybe I have more information to make a decision. And as I have told people, I am not committing to churning my vote. If I had to take a vote now, the vote would be to give it to the developer and let him develop, you know, market rate housing. And the only reason is because then at that point, I know that building will remain standing. That's the concern that I have. And I got to be honest, in some of those evaluations, and I've talked to, you know, several folks, listen, if I bought it at 40,000, 50,000, I'd demolish that building, I'd make more money just off the stone, the wood, everything in there. And I'm not, I'm not naive to that fact, but unfortunately, that's just the way the public sector works in terms of the, when they sell their real estate, the real estate, it's at a lower value than commercial property. That doesn't mean that we need to go in that direction, but that's where it is. So I just personally needed a little bit more time to talk to the administration, so I'm going to make a motion to table. If it's supported, it's supported, if it's not, so be it. Motion to table.
Motion to table has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Rule call.
There was a motion to leave to withdraw, meeting second.
Is this?
Motion to table takes precedent, Councilor.
Okay, thank you.
On the motion to table, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libbidi?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Raposo?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes. Motion is now table, man, quick. Item is now table.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor, and in order to accept a donation from Rhode Island Novelty of four boxes of miscellaneous toys to be used at the tree lighting event in December.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, under motion to adopt, councilor seat six, councilor vice president, prayer.
Justice, can we send Rhode Island Novelty a thank you?
Yeah, we always do. We will take you, Councilor. Motion to adopt has been made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is a communication from the mayor, and in order to accept the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Municipal Road Safety Program Award in the amount of $60,000 to fund additional traffic enforcement patrols to increase road safety.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four is a communication from the mayor and a proposal for Bristol County Opera funding in the amount of $35,200 for the Open Space and Recreational Plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five are appropriation orders. The first, that the sum of $308,843 be in the same as hereby appropriated from the tax levy to the reserve fund. Motion made.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five B, that the sum of $150,000 be in the same as hereby appropriated from the tax levy to overlay account.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And five C, that the sum of $31,248.64 be in the same as hereby appropriated from the reserve fund to intergovernmental. to intergovernmental expenses for Bristol County Agricultural Assessment.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item six are requests from the Traffic Commission to amend the ordinances.
Motion to be deferred to committee on legislation.
Motion so made.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven A is the Planning Board's recommendation not to approve the discontinuance of Ash Street extending from Center Street to Globe Street.
Motion grant or to leave to withdraw?
Motion to accept the recommendation, grant leave to withdraw has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven B is the Planning Board's recommendation not to approve the discontinuance of Center Street extending from Ash Street to South Beacon Street.
Same motion.
Motion accept recommendation, grant order, leave to withdraw.
Second.
Motion accept recommendation, grant order, leave to withdraw has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight A is the Planning Board's recommendation to approve the acceptance of Gatehouse Drive extending from Maple Street to Prospect Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Planning Board's recommendation.
Motion accept the recommendation, adopt the order, has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight B is the Planning Board's recommendation to approve the acceptance of Mohawk Drive extending from Indian Town Road back to Indian Town Road.
Motion to approve, Planning Board's recommendation.
Second.
Motion to accept the recommendation, adopt the order, has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And eight C is the Planning Board's recommendation to accept, excuse me, to discontinue the Vine Street from South Beacon to Ash Street.
Motion to approve, Planning Board's recommendation.
Second.
Motion accept the recommendation, adopt the order, has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine is an order scheduling a hearing for the street acceptance for Hayfield Lane extending from Highland Farm Road to Northern and Southern Terminus.
Motion so made.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten is an order scheduling a public hearing for the acceptance of Highland Farm Road extending from Highland Avenue to Hayfield Lane.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten is an order scheduling a public hearing for the acceptance of Old Pasture Way extending from Highland Farm Road to Terminus.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twelve is an order scheduling the hearing for the acceptance of Steep Brook Terrace extending from Highland Farm Road to the Terminus.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item thirteen is an order canceling the City Council Committee on Finance and Regular Meetings scheduled for December twenty-sixth.
Can you tell us why that's been canceled, Madam Court?
Government centers closed on the twenty-sixth of December.
Just want to let the people know. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item fourteen is the Police Chief's report on licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item fifteen is in order for the renewal of an application for an auto body shop license on behalf of Competitive Auto Body and Sales at ten twenty-one Locust Street.
Motion so made.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item sixteen is in order and application for the renewal of auto repair shop license for Tony's Gas and Repair for O2 Brightman Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seventeen is in order granting permission for the transfer of an auto repair shop license located at six eighty-one Brayton Avenue from Nuno de Sudo doing business as Easy Auto Repair to Cardozo Garage doing business as Easy Auto Repair.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a number of claims.
Motion to forward a corporation counsel.
Motion to forward claims to corporation counsel has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nineteen is a communication from a city resident expressing interest in the purchase of a parcel of city.
Motion to refer to real estate. Second.
Motion to further committee on real estate has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty is a request for the, a placement of a structure on or over a public way on behalf of the Elections Department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to adopt, approve has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to take twenty-two to twenty-five?
I do twenty-one.
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 Skip twenty-one.
No.
Let's get twenty-one done, then we'll do the making of the motion. Madam Court?
Twenty-one is a drain layers license on behalf of the City Construction Department.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to take twenty-two to twenty-five?
Second.
Motion to take item twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five together has